Good evening, everyone. Today is May 22, 2023, and this is a legislative session for the Salisbury City Council. Do we have Mrs. Gregory on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, so she is here. All right. All right, so I'll call the meeting to order. Just a brief announcement, in case of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm. We would exit out this door, take a right down the hallway, and go down the stairs, and exit the building. If that area is blocked, we would take a left, go all the way around, go down the stairs, and exit the building. Please, in any type of emergency situation, do not use the elevator. We will, at this time, stand and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have Dr. Bruce Glisten from Allen Memorial Baptist Church to provide us with the invocation. Dr. Glisten?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, and we recognize you as a mighty and a great God. And, Lord, we praise you and we thank you for all the creation that you have made, and that includes each and every one of us. Father, I pray that tonight, as we meet as a council, and every person that speaks, that they will listen to your leading and direction. Father, I pray that we will seek your wisdom, Lord, and we seek every answer to come from you. Lord, we will not give thoughts, actions, or reactions that aren't from you. Father, I pray that we lean heavily on your direction and guidance in everything that happens in this place tonight. And, Father, I praise you and I thank you for this council and for the people that are here tonight, and I pray, Lord, that each one of us are seeking after your will and your direction in everything we do. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Glisten. Next, we have a proclamation by Mayor Heath for EMS Week.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and the city of Salisbury is committed to ensuring the safety and security of its citizens; and whereas the members of the Salisbury Emergency Medical Services are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week; and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury; and whereas emergency medical service has grown to fill a gap, providing important, out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine; and whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers; and whereas the members of the city of Salisbury Emergency Medical Service, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills; and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, John R. Heath, acting mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim May 21 through the 27, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week in our city, with the theme EMS Week: Where Emergency Care Begins, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. At this time, I'd like to have Chris Truitt come up to accept the proclamation.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Heath and the council. Yeah, as you said, I could be up here a very long time talking about all the accolades and the great things that the members have done in the past year, but just some highlights. Last year, 2022, we ran almost 12,000 EMS calls. That was up about 4% from the year before. So if you want to think about it, every 45 minutes, there's a call. Each call takes about 50 minutes, so you do the math on that. We definitely get staggered out at times. Last year, the top five calls were folks who were just generally sick, a lot of falls, breathing problems, chest pain, and unconscious subjects. As the mayor alluded to, you know, that early care is really key, and last year, 25% of our cardiac arrest patients that regained a pulse in the field had, as favorable as it discharged, a home. So they didn't just go to a nursing home or something, they walked out on their own two feet. So. Five of our SWIFT team members successfully obtained their community paramedic certification, super hard test, I've been told. I am not brave enough to take it yet. We promoted four paramedics to the new rank of EMS sergeant, and as the call volume goes up, we're trying to, you know, think about some new things, some out-of-the-box ideas. So SWIFT has converted also to a minor definitive care now scenario, so a nurse practitioner and a paramedic go out to the low-acuity calls for EMS at least three days a week. We were able to put a fourth staff transport unit up 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we've also began utilizing non-transport units to address some of the other calls, the lift assists or things like that, when the EMS units are tied up. So it's busy, busy, but, you know, we definitely appreciate everything you do for us, and yeah, thank you again for recognizing EMS.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Good evening. Good evening. We have one item on the consent agenda tonight. It is the April 17, 2023 work session minutes.
Questions or comments from the council on this item?
No.
None.
All for the question, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Miller?
Yes, good evening, mayor and city council. We have a few things on the procurement agenda tonight. The first is the award of bid for invitation to bid number ITB 23-115. That's the helical pier underpinning at the Salisbury wastewater treatment plant. This was solicited by the Department of Infrastructure for the Department of Infrastructure and Development. This is to install helical piles and replace sidewalk at the Salisbury wastewater treatment plant. Bids went live on March 14. Bids were received on April 20 at 2:30 p.m. We did receive five responsive bids. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder was Avon Corporation out of Alexandria, Virginia, for a total cost of $176,729. The GL accounts noted in your packet are fully funded to support that cost.
Questions or comments from the council on this item?
None.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is invitation to bid number ITB A-23-116. That is security guard services. This procurement was solicited for the Department of Arts, Business, and Culture, more specifically, security guard service for the city of Salisbury Zoological Park. Bids went live in February, February 10, 2023. Bids were opened March 16, 2023. We received five bids there. The lowest responsive and responsible vendor there was Divine Professional Consulting Group out of Silver Spring, Maryland. Currently, the GL budget for security guard services for the zoo is about $55,000 a year. So when you're looking at a contract that's possibly renewable for up to three years, you would be looking at a total cost of about $165,000. So assuming the FY '24 budget gets approved for that GL line item, that account would be considered funded, the account noted in your packet. Now, that contract does have a contract renewal clause. We contract for recurring services for a period of one year, and then at the end of that one year, assuming that we want to renew with the vendor, they want to renew with us, we would choose to renew.
Questions on this item?
I do. With the security guard, how many will we have at the park, or will it just be one security?
One. Yeah, per any one shift.
Is that all year round, or is that focused during the?
Yes, in the evenings, like 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m.
Oh, so, okay.
So you have two shifts per night?
Yeah, and I think Lenora's on the Zoom call. I think Lenora could better answer that question.
We have, we only have one guard, and it is just a single shift. It's from 8:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m.
8:00 p.m., okay.
Even somebody there.
Mm-hmm.
The bear gets out.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay. Any other questions or comments on that?
No.
Okay. The next item is request for proposal number RFP A-23-103. This is debt collection services. This was solicited for the Department of Finance. The scope of work here includes debt collection services to collect delinquent charges or amounts owed to the city of Salisbury. Proposals were released March 3. Proposals were received April 6. We did receive three total proposals. The highest-ranked responsive and responsible vendor for this award would be First Credit Services out of New Jersey, with a total of 88 points. They proposed a cost of about 16.5% of collections. I do want to note that as the firm may be, as this debt collection firm may be directed from time to time by the city to perform litigation activities for select collection efforts, for example, filing suit to obtain and enforce a judgment, council approval of this contract award would be intended to also satisfy Section SC 9-1, City Solicitor, wherein additional legal counsel may be authorized and/or retained from time to time by the council.
Questions or comments?
I do. Have we ever used that service before for a debt collection agency, where we had to have them?
This particular service, no. Is, Andy, do you, is anybody from Finance on? Okay.
Let me see, he was on a second ago.
One moment. I'm hoping that the director of Finance is on and can answer maybe more specifically than I can.
He was on, he is not on at the moment.
Okay. My understanding for the past few years, I think the city of Salisbury was using a local attorney to do debt collections.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Can follow up with you?
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
No.
Okay.
Okay. And then the last two items would be our office seeking approval from city council to declare the following items as surplus and dispose of them as noted. They are both, well, both requests are from the Salisbury Police Department. They're also property room items. In the first case, they're property room items where the police department would like to use these items for departmental use. The other ones are, would be public auction sale.
Questions or comments on these?
No.
All right, thank you. So I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Michelle, you good?
Yeah, good. Sorry, I have to mute it.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3259.
So move.
Second.
Who was that, Megan or Andy?
Me.
Resolution 3259, a resolution of the city of Salisbury to update and amend the employee handbook, including implementing a code of ethical conduct and SVY CARES program and revising grievance procedures. Whereas the city of Salisbury has an employee handbook, and whereas the mayor's office and the human resources department have reviewed the employee handbook and recommend certain changes and additions set forth in the proposed employee handbook attached as Exhibit A. And whereas mayor and council have reviewed the proposed employee handbook and approve all amendments, and whereas by this resolution, the council hereby approves the handbook attached heretofore incorporated as Exhibit A, and hereby authorize the employee handbook to become effective July 1, 2023, and now therefore be resolved by the council in the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the employee handbook attached heretofore incorporated herein as Exhibit A shall become effective July 1, 2023, and shall remain in effect until any such other further amendments shall be approved by council.
Any questions or comments on this item?
Just a comment, that reviewing the handbook, again, it's very well put together. I like it very much. It was, you could tell a lot of work is going into this.
It was a great job.
I'd like to thank Megan and her team. They did a great job. I agree.
Call for the question. All those in favor of approving resolution number 3259, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3260.
So move.
Second.
Resolution number 3260, a resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury to modify the city of Salisbury Sustainable Community Boundaries to include 510 West Road. Whereas the city of Salisbury has previously submitted to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development a Sustainable Community Designation application, and has adopted a Sustainable Community Plan, which application and plan have been approved either directly by the department or through the Smart Growth Subcabinet of the state of Maryland. And whereas the city of Salisbury proposes to modify the area designated as the city of Salisbury Sustainable Community, as outlined on the revised Sustainable Community Map attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, whereas the modified area is located within a property funding area under Section 5-7B-02 of the Smart Growth Act, and whereas the applicable law and the community legacy program regulations require local government to submit an application to the department to, in order to modify, designate a sustainable community, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the council of the city of Salisbury hereby approves the modifications of the Sustainable Community, as outlined on the revised Sustainable, excuse me, Sustained Community Map attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and the mayor of the city of Salisbury be, and hereby is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of the resolution. Section 2, copies of this resolution shall be sent to the secretary of the Department of Housing and Community Development of the state of Maryland for consideration by the Smart Growth Subcabinet. Just as a side note, 510 West Road was the old Campbell Soup property.
Questions or comments?
None.
Call for the question. All those in favor of approving resolution number 3260 to send up to Jake, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2806 for second reading.
So move.
Second.
James.
Spocher?
Good evening, everyone. Ordinance number 2806, this was amended on May 8, 2023, as read, and I'll go ahead and read that for you, but just to highlight, the amendment was the amount salvaged had increased from $3,574.80 to $4,518.40. Whereas the Department of Field Operations Streets, Roadways Division demolished structures located at 117 to 325 Lake Street, and whereas as a result of providing material salvage from the structures to Donovan Salvage Works, which resulted in payment to the city in the amount of $4,518.40, which was deposited into the general fund; and whereas the Department of Field Operations has use for the funds received and requests that these funds in a total amount of $4,518.40 be transferred to the Street Roadways operating account, which is 31150546006, which is used in part for the daily operations of the Street Roadways Division. And whereas Section 7-29 of the city charter forbids any office, department, or agency from expending funds not appropriated, and whereas the appropriations must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council, Section 1, Acting Mayor John R. Heath is hereby authorized to appropriate funds to the Department of Field Operations in the amount of $4,518.40. And the city of Salisbury's FY 2023 general fund budget be, and hereby is amended as follows, increase revenue for the general fund revenue scrap recycling account number 01000434505 by $4,518.40, and increase expense for account description, Street Roadways operating accounts 31150-546006 by that same amount, which is $4,518.40.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2806 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2807 for second reading.
So move.
Second.
Ordinance number 2807, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2023 general fund budget and the FY 2023 water sewer fund budget to appropriate additional funds required for field operations. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2807 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2808 for first reading.
So move.
Second.
Ordinance number 2808, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to appropriate funds for the comprehensive plan project and the zoning code project. Whereas the city of Salisbury is due to update the comprehensive plan and zoning code, and whereas the city of Salisbury determined that an additional $75,000 will be required to complete the comprehensive plan project, and $85,000 is required for the zoning code project. And whereas funding for the two projects shall be provided by transferring $160,000 in pay-go funds from the computer-aided dispatch project. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the appropriation of the $160,000 as provided here and above must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city of Salisbury. Section 1 of ordinance 2808 reads, Acting Mayor John R. Heath, on behalf of the city of Salisbury, is hereby authorized to appropriate funds for the comprehensive plan project in the amount of $75,000, and the zoning code project in the amount of $85,000. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's general capital project fund budget be, and hereby is amended as follows, increase revenue for project description comprehensive plan, account description pay-go, account number 98023469313-48088 by $75,000. Increase expense for project description comprehensive plan, account description engineering, account 9812351302048088 by that same amount, $75,000. Increase revenue for zoning code account description pay-go, 98023469313-TBD by $85,000. Increase expense for zoning code account description construction, 98123513026-TBD by $85,000. And decrease revenue, computer-aided dispatch, account description pay-go, account 9802346931343034 by $160,000. And decrease expense, computer-aided dispatch, account description construction, account number 98123513026-43034 by that same amount, $160,000.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
Okay. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2808 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You good, Michelle? Okay. And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2809 for second reading.
So move.
Second.
Ordinance number 2809, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to accept state of Maryland, Maryland State Police grant funds for license plate reader equipment for the Salisbury Police Department. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments on this item?
Just a comment, I think it's fantastic, and I think it's an outstanding use of grant money.
Yes. Call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2809 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Reading her lips, she said aye. Any opposed? And the chair votes aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will move into public comments. We, let's see, quite a few comments here. So what we ask is, just some general rules. Number one, be respectful. And we thank everyone. If you would like to make a public comment, please fill out the form. Make sure that we do have at least some form of contact, so that if there's a question that we need to get back to you on, somebody from the city will communicate that to you. And what we ask is that everybody try to keep your comments within four minutes, so that everybody can have a chance to make comments tonight. So first up, we have Rick Conrad.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you. As said, I'm Rick Conrad. I live at 819 Riverside Drive. I've lived in my home on Riverside since 2005. We use South Boulevard on a daily basis to navigate between Riverside Drive and Route 13. Recently, the red light at Camden Avenue-South Boulevard intersection was decommissioned, and stop signs were put up on South Boulevard. No stopping was set up for Camden Avenue. This new two-way stop creates a significant issue for those of us traveling on South Boulevard. The intersection with a working red light can be very dangerous due to the traffic on Camden traditionally running at a high rate of speed. This was evidenced in 2011 when my father went through a green light on South Boulevard toward Route 13 and was T-boned by a driver speeding through the red light on the University of Salisbury side of Camden Avenue. My father could have been killed, but luckily, he recovered from what turned out to be minor injuries. Sadly, history repeated itself Wednesday when my mother and father were traveling through the same intersection in the same direction and were hit by a vehicle traveling from College Side, the College Side of Camden Avenue. My father suffered a broken rib, my mother a concussion. Their car was destroyed, and dad was cited for the first time in his 70-year-old driving career. The damage to the rearmost passenger quarter panel of their car was indicative of the vehicle that hit them, traveling well over the speed limit for Camden Avenue, which is 25, and a witness driving behind that driver said they made no effort to brake, even though my dad was three-quarters of the way through the intersection. I was disappointed and appalled to discover that council and the administration was informed of this problem at the intersection at their April meeting by one of my neighbors, and no action was taken. Seeing the pain of my parents as they're in right now makes me angry that this was not deemed important enough for some kind of action. The reason this intersection is so dangerous is because of the bad line of vision from both directions on South Boulevard. It's especially bad in the direction that my dad was traveling on both days that he was hit. On that side, there's a large hedge and telephone pole that blocks the line of vision for any traffic attempting to go through the intersection. You must pull out well into the intersection to see the fast-moving traffic from the right side. This is why my dad did not see it coming in 2011 and why he was hit last Wednesday. In addition, while pulled out into the intersection, you are then at risk from cars coming from your left, because you're out in the intersection. Coming from the direction of Route 13 toward Riverside Drive, there's a retaining wall that blocks a clean view of oncoming traffic from the right. Also, in reconfiguring this intersection, they've removed the new bike lane on the curbside and added a right turn lane. This then moves the pass-through lane to the middle of the street and makes it look like a left turn lane to people more than one car back who can't see the street markings. This means that if you're going straight, you actually have to bear to the right to go across the intersection. To me, this redesign has muddled the intersection, making it a lot less safe. I've had two cars in the turn lane next to me as I was going through the intersection in the last two weeks go straight instead of turning, as is required. in the last two weeks go straight instead of turning as is required and almost hit me two times. Traffic on Camden, which has always run fast, now has a racetrack feel. And I think this is going to end with many more accidents that could kill or maim someone. One happened this morning when I was coming back from Dunkin' Donuts. There's another car being towed out of the intersection. Third accident since this has been changed towards the end of March. The traffic on Camden is a problem. There's no traffic camps. There's no stop signs. Coming from the University of Side, they do have a red light at College Avenue. But between the end of Fruitland and the termination of Camden in down by the traffic circle here in Salisbury, there's nothing to slow people down. We're putting traffic camps in every side street around, but Camden doesn't seem to merit one. And this is where students walk across the street a couple of blocks down from the intersection that I'm talking about. Finally, the configuration means those of us traveling on South Boulevard have significantly longer waitlot times during busy times of the day. That's less important than someone's life. But even the misplaced traffic circle on South Boulevard and Riverside Road, that intersection would be a welcome relief compared to the mess that this new setup has created. And my understanding is there, there's a turning radius issue there that won't allow a traffic circle to be put in. But why one was put in at Riverside Road and South Boulevard is got all of us scratching our heads. We certainly don't understand that. So I urge the city council to take a look at this and act to change this decision now before it's too late. The one thing that this has revealed to me as I put some of this out on social media is there's a great deal of disgruntlement in this community about the way our roads are being redesigned. There are problems with net lanes being too narrow, turning radius not being adequate, stop bars being put too far to the front of the intersection, making it dangerous. You have commercial vehicles with trailers that have trouble navigating these streets. You know the streets I'm talking about. College Avenue, South Boulevard, Waverly, and now Carroll Street. Waverly, we can't figure out this, I call it the Frankenstein bike lane. The bike lane's more important than the turn-in to the hospital. Go down there and watch people try to turn into the hospital by trying to figure out how to turn in from Waverly. It's not marked. They go up to the light and turn illegally to get to the hospital. Now imagine you're going to the hospital on an emergency and trying to figure out how to turn in to get to the emergency room. This is what we're dealing with, with road design in this community. We need to get the citizens more involved in road design and get their input before we just trust what engineers say that is the best thing for our community. I thank you for listening to me. I sure do appreciate the efforts that you all put forth as volunteers. Well, actually, you're paid technically to probably volunteer. So I appreciate it. I've sat on that side of the table myself in my career, so I know it's a tough job. So do the right thing here. Fix this mess and let's move on. I'm willing to serve if you need somebody to volunteer to help with the kind of input that you need from citizens groups. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tammy Taylor.
I live at six oh six Crestview Lane. And I want to echo a lot of Mr. Conrad's comments, but I also am here tonight as a cyclist. And I don't feel safe in many of the new bike lanes that have been added, especially the ones that have two-way bike traffic on one side of the road. It's difficult to make turns when you're not on the right-hand side of the road. And I know that Salisbury wants to be a bike-friendly community. And I don't want to repeat everything else that was said, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Norma Dobrowski. Did I say that right? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Norma Dobrowski, ten thirty-four Riverside Drive in Salisbury. I want to echo the comments that were just made by the previous gentleman. We don't know each other, but he's saying exactly what I think. Since this light was disabled, evidently there have been quite a few accidents. There is pedestrian fear. And honestly, I try to give all my business to South Salisbury. I'm a South Salisbury person. It's difficult to have to think that you have to be fearful to go to the grocery store or the drugstore. You cannot pull into that intersection any longer and you are midway of the intersection before you can possibly see where the oncoming traffic is. The hedge is wide, it's tall, you have retaining walls on the other side of the road. It is impossible unless you're already committed, you're already out in front. The Camden Avenue traffic is going twice as fast as it used to because it knows now there's nothing to stop and people are barreling down there. We don't want to have to be afraid to patronize our South Salisbury businesses, and I'm sure you don't want your residents to feel that way. When something new is introduced, you'll hear a lot of people say, well, people just don't know how to drive or they're older or they have to get used to it. No amount of time passing is going to make the intersection more safe or more visible. Time passing and learning how to maneuver, which I don't think is necessary since all the years I've been here, this intersection's never been a problem. And now here, we have all this problem. We have already overtaxed our police and EMS, ambulance and fire in this town as well as all across the country. We don't need to create a problem where there was none. I would implore you as a governing body to recognize that perhaps this was not a greatly advised decision to make and to do the right thing for the citizens and reverse this decision. You have some options here that are very viable. You can turn the light right back on the way it was. You can make a four-way, which is, I'm not crazy about four-ways, but it would be a lot safer than it is now. So there are some easy decisions to make here to go back and make this safer to citizens. And I would implore you as a governing body to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is, is that Ray Birch? Or is, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mayor. I'm just too much shy of being a thirty-year City of Salisbury employee. Kim can acknowledge my presence. I'm here today to also support Rick in his endeavors. And I would, as a traffic superintendent and traffic systems manager, I also would like to bring my concern to the mayor and city council about the almost elimination of the traffic branch. There were five individuals when I worked for the City of Salisbury and I retired in two thousand and fourteen. And with that, we had three certified traffic signal technicians as well as two certified pavement and signage technicians. And they were all certified through IMSA, which is International Municipal Signal Association. In ten short years' time, that department has been decimated. There are zero electricians to work on traffic lights. One of the goals that we strove to accomplish when I was working and is in the mayor's proposals is to repair streetlights in a timely fashion after they had been reported to the City of Salisbury. Contrary to that, that's not happening. You have a traffic signal on flash at Parkside High School that would have been repaired within two days during my administration. We kept an inventory. We had, we had spare cabinets to accommodate such things as lightning strikes which occurred at Parkside. And now we have a traffic signal at a school that has been on flash for an excess of a month. And that's totally unacceptable, in my opinion. And I just asked the mayor and city council to please staff these departments the way they were occurred. I'm looking at the FY twenty-three budget. And also, in the FY proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-four, there was, they have eliminated three positions within the traffic branch. There's no more traffic systems manager. There are no electricians on staff, certified electricians. And right now, one accident that occurs at one of these intersections or streetlights that cause somebody to be injured or mugged or something like that due to lack of repair is going to bring a lawsuit against the City of Salisbury. So I just hope and pray that you guys start funding these positions and get back up where we were in two thousand and fourteen. Thank you.
Next up is Laura Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the chance to talk. Hi, I'm Dr. Kelly. I don't want to repeat or be redundant, but I do have some personal contact with this corner as we live on the corner. We're the owner of the house with the hedge. I have been, spent my life as a physician working for kids. Injury prevention's been my specialty. I ran the injury prevention program at Bellevue in New York, lived in major cities, and moved here with my four kids over twenty years ago. Live on the corner, raised four kids there. I commend the efforts of this city, all of you, for trying to make this a walkable, bikeable, safe city. And I realize that I don't know the full details behind decisions made. This particular intersection, I did make a phone call right away as soon as I heard about it to, to the department in charge of this to say there will be accidents. And I had the fortune of meeting Mr. Conrad this morning. We all were heartstruck about his parents. We've had fender benders at this intersection for a while. But when we inherited the property, the hedge was all the way to the street. With the light, we've gotten it back and it was actually fine. Without the light, the two retaining walls that's been mentioned has made this a very, very treacherous crossing. What I wanted to focus on, other than saying I wish Mr. Conrad's parents good health and recovery, is pedestrians. I'm very focused on pedestrians in my career, but I also raise these kids there and watch every day. Today, I was in my yard, I counted over forty pedestrians in two hours. They're mostly elderly, but there are a lot of kids coming across that intersection, people getting up to acne, as was mentioned, up to the pharmacy on foot. Across this city, as everywhere I've lived, there's, there's certain things that come to your mind. When I lived in New York, Chinatown had firecrackers and kids were blowing out their eardrums. When I was in Manhattan, they weren't using car seats. When I was in Cincinnati, Midwest wasn't as keen on bike helmets, so the kids weren't using bike helmets. So it's always sort of specialty issues that come to mind when you move places. Here, right out of the gate, pedestrians. The crosswalks for the kids walking from north, south, east, and west to even get to something like a unity park are virtually nonexistent. The college is a prototype of beauty. When you see those flashing lights, those college kids, you know, drunk, stoned, or straight, can, can navigate beautifully across there. But the youngest of our population, and particularly the elderly and disabled that we have coming on wheelchairs up that road from the apartments, are really out of luck. So I know that there is committees working on bicycles and cars and some pedestrian safety, but I'm here to urge this council and as Mr. Conrad said, I'm, I'm happy to be a citizen, joining the effort on focusing not only on the dangerous intersection decisions, the bike lanes that are treacherous, but also really bringing attention to pedestrian safety in, in the City of Salisbury. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up is Lynn Bratton.
I am, I can get it down. I think Tammy's already gone, but I can get it down. Being short, you have to bring it down. My name is Lynn Bratton. I live at three oh three South Boulevard. Prior to that, I lived at three oh nine Middle Boulevard, one block over. Same orientation on the odd side of the street. I live exactly one house away from South Boulevard. I have traveled that street since I was a child, and I'm seventy-one. I know that there's been a stoplight there for, at least since the sixties, I believe, when my dad used to bring us up to a yarn shop that was on North Boulevard. We would drive up from Princess Anne, and I remember him driving down south and around the back and up the other way so that mom could get out on the side of the street where the yarn shop was. As far as I can remember, especially since nineteen seventy-three, when I bought my first home, that stoplight's been there. Why, when it wasn't broken, did it have to get changed? Why was that in some master plan? Oh my goodness, that light's a problem. Is it too expensive for the electricity? Is it like it's ugly? What is wrong with it? Why did it have to go away? I travel that every morning. I was there at quarter of seven this morning when the two, when the two cars collided. Now, I didn't see the actual accident, but it was pretty clear to me it had just happened. And it seemed as though it was a product of having to inch out into the intersection to see, and the other car was making a left-hand, a left-hand turn and maybe didn't realize that the car was inching, and they hit each other. I don't, I really don't even, I remember having an accident there maybe twenty-five years ago, myself as a younger person. I don't really even remember that many accidents. So I just don't know what was wrong with it that you had to change it because it was working. It was working. And now, as Mr. Conrad mentioned, they've got the center lane, you got to get over into the center lane to go straight across. And if you're one car back, that looks like that's a left-hand turn lane. And then you got cars coming up on the other side of you that are going straight across when really I was in the lane that should be going straight across. It's a mess. And I drive it two and three times a day. And I'm trying to figure out how to avoid it, but I really don't know how. And at this point, from the circle to College Avenue, there's nothing that's slowing anybody down. Nothing. Before, there was at least a stoplight that every so often you either had to stop and wait for the cars to go, or you actually got a red light and then you got to cross. Please just put it back. You haven't taken it down yet. Just turn it back on. Make us all happy, please. I think you're putting up some kind of a speed thing there this afternoon, like letting people know how fast they're going. That's not going to change anybody. I'm sorry. You know, there's no siren that goes off or anything. Number two, I just want to say again, I appreciate what you do with the budget. I'm still very concerned about how it's getting, how it is eventually getting balanced because taking out five million and cutting one point six million in my mathematics brain doesn't seem to still make it even. But perhaps you have a plan. I know Andy said there were some people that weren't, you know, positions that weren't being filled. I hope we're not taking money out of a, out of a safety fund to try and keep it balanced. I hope that's not what's happening because I don't think that's a prudent solution either. So thank you very much. I'm done within my four minutes, right?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Next up is Ryan Whitehall.
My name is Ryan Whitehall. I live at three thirty Camden Avenue. Since everybody else is on the conversation of traffic, I guess I'll give my input on that, too. Three thirty Camden Avenue is about two parcels away from the traffic circle. Since the inception of the traffic circle, it's exponentially better there. Trying to beat the light, people would probably travel in excess of seventy miles an hour up there when I used to live right next to the traffic circle. So it's gotten a lot better. Still, a lot of speeding going on, particularly in the evening, I would say, though. And I think that goes all the way up to Newton Street. Some type of traffic calming measure in that area would be greatly appreciated. Newton Street in particular is another place where people make that left and travel really quickly. It's a very tight road. There's parking on the side. Lot of pedestrians in that neighborhood, lot of kids as well. Somebody opens a door or a child steps out between a vehicle, it's impossible to see them. I travel that street every morning at five fifteen, either Newton or I head up to South and about, even that early in the morning, I can already, you know, see where some of the vehicle issues are. So I imagine in the middle of the day, when there's more people traveling the roads, that there's a larger issue. South Boulevard, I initially thought it was going to be a four-way stop there. And I thought that was a, I didn't love it, but I thought it was a, that was a pretty good idea. I thought that was a pretty safe measure. I was traveling southbound on Camden Avenue today and there was a I was traveling southbound on Camden Avenue today, and there was a, there was a black Jeep that was basically had three-quarters of vehicle out of my lane just so they could see to their left before they crossed. So I've experienced that both ways. I don't usually stop at the stop sign there, but I know that's an issue. I also used to live on Monticello Avenue, at the corner of Smith and Monticello. And I thought it was strange that there were speed bumps that were put in on Monticello. When I lived there, that was not the, that was not the street where people sped. It was Smith Street. And so Smith Street doesn't have any traffic calming measures. That was where, there weren't any stop signs. It's where all of the students also were walking, because they would come from Middle and Hanover and Florida and Ohio and all down that area. So I thought it was strange that Monticello got the traffic calming measures. I didn't notice that there was a lot of traffic there. I also wondered the way in which some of these measures are prioritized. I also lived at Alvin Avenue, which is right off Main Street. It's behind Kellin's Cafe, close to the, what I would call Five Points Boulevard, where La Tot Teque is, Y-Hi. Very, basically a ghost town in the evenings, Main Street, but in the middle of the day, when there is the most traffic on that street, so too are their children everywhere. And so I've seen some of these other things sort of seem to take precedence over an area which I really thought was one of the most important intersections in the entire city, particularly in terms of safety for youth. I thought it was a good point with respect to the College Avenue and the measures that are taken there for students to cross. But I think it's obvious, at least from the point of view of the citizens, where maybe some, where our focus should be paid attention, I guess I should, but. So thank you for giving me the time, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Luke Angelo.
All right. Good evening. My name is Luke Angelo. As Mayor said, I live outside the city limits. I live off of Jersey. But I have a suggestion that I think would be best, I think would be in the best interest of our city, our city's social media manager and residents, if we create a concise and visually appealing summary of our current master plans, particularly focusing on the downtown master plan and the city park master plan. Many people seem eager to see the development happening, but the plans, the details haven't been effectively explained to everyone. As a result, numerous questions remain unanswered. One major issue is that the downtown master plan cannot be viewed since the page on the website does not exist. When Franklin Graham visited Salisbury a few weeks ago, due to the overwhelming number of attendees, people ended up parking in bike lanes and other non-parking spaces, even with lots one and 10 available for parking. With these lots gone, I'm concerned about how chaotic the parking situation might become during future events. While I fully support making our city more walkable, it's crucial to note that successful walkable towns often have easily accessible and reliable public transportation systems. Unfortunately, we currently lack such options here. If my understanding is correct, the funds required for the master plans have already been allocated. However, I urge you to improve the communication of these plans with the public. It is vital to ensure that residents are well-informed and can actively participate in shaping the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Robert Taylor.
I'll say again, come this fall, I'll be a 51-year taxpayer of the city and resident. I'm here to kind of continue what I was speaking on two weeks ago. I was cut off. I'll try to do a four-minute mile, if I can. I didn't come to speak about the traffic situation, but having heard some of the speakers, just a couple of quick points. First of all, I'm glad I don't have to go into the Camden area very often and use those streets. I happen to live on North Park Drive, and I invite you, if you want to see another street that this supposed traffic engineer did a number on, come take a look at North Park Drive, particularly between Beglin Park, between the street that goes down by the front entrance to the park and Beaver Dam Road. The lanes are now so narrow that sooner or later, there's going to be a head-on collision. I hope it's not fatal. And in any event, I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done to undo some of the screwed up that's already happened. What I did come to talk about and continue is on the budget. And there have been a few things that have happened since two weeks ago. On Monday a week ago, Mr. Kitrow explained that the proposed fire EMS fee is now in the circular file, which is a good idea, I think, and probably legally necessary. He also explained that there would be about $1.6 million of budget cuts. Now, as a speaker earlier mentioned, you're taking out that fee, that's about $5.4 million. Now, the difference between 5.4 and 1.6 is, I think, 3.8, if I remember my math. Where's that coming from? How's that now going to be balanced? We need to have that information publicly, in writing, on paper, before the June 5th meeting, to see how the budget is going to be constructed and how it's going to be balanced. I understand there's a wild card with whatever money the city might get from the county regarding the services that the city provides in the, out in the county areas in that fire district. So I understand there's some, there's some rough spots here. I mean, but nevertheless, if the public is going to be able to comment intelligently on a budget, they have to have what it's going to be, how it's going to be revised, before the meeting at which they're going to comment on it. Now, that having been said, I wanted to use the rest of my time to just concentrate maybe on what I'd call the bigger picture, and particularly going forward. Let's stop and look back a minute for, well, how did we get here? Well, what's happened is, the city has built a structural deficit for itself over the years. Yes, the last tax increase was, I think, in 2016. However, since that, that time, what's happened? We've had very low inflation until last year, and we've had much higher increase in the assessable tax base for real estate. So essentially, the city was getting in more revenue than it had to spend due to inflation. Now, more recently, in the last couple of years, there's also been the influx of federal money, COVID relief funds. In this current year's budget, I believe the figure is 4.5 million of federal money. That's not in the budget for FY24. So there's automatically 4.5 million there that you've got to worry about. In addition to that, in the revised budget for this year that's listed in the budget document, it indicates that you took 2.7 million of reserve funds. Wasn't in the, wasn't in the initial budget that was passed, so apparently there's been some sort of change, I guess an amendment, to put that in. If you add those together, what have you got coming out? 4.5 in the federal, 2.7, that's upwards of $8 million. That money is, that's not going to be there unless you're going to inject more from the reserve funds to balance the deficit that I just mentioned earlier, the difference between the money that won't be there because of the fire and EMS fee being now canned and the 1.6 million in cuts. So if you look at it that way, there's a real structural deficit that we've got. Now, how do you do that? I mean, we've put ourselves in a hole. We've got to stop digging. And one of the things we can do to stop digging is kill this Horizon program that Ross has a tax break on to subsidize the development of it, that over the years is going to be millions of dollars of lost property tax revenue. I figured that of the 20-year period for that tax break that they get, 14 years, if you want to average out all the different percentages, 14 years out of 20, that's 70% of what the tax revenue is going to be normally, you're not going to get. And if you start putting other projects in, like this hotel they're talking about or anything else, then that's just going to compound that hit that the city gets. So we've got to start looking ahead and saying, how do we get out of this hole? And another thing, I won't go into detail on this, is stop cutting frivolous expenses. In my opinion, probably some don't agree with me, I think the Folk Festivals are a frivolous expense. Yeah, a couple days a year, they're real nice, they're photo opportunities. What about the other 363 or two days a year? They don't do anything. So anyway, that's, that's what I'm going to do, is dwell on this, and there are some ideas I have for some further actions you can take, which I won't go into tonight, but I will in the next few days be sending them to you by email. And I hope you read them, and I hope you've read what I've sent you so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, next up, we'll have comments from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. First, as usual, my appeal for blood. We still have a blood shortage. Please, if you're capable of donating blood, please do that. This past week, we celebrated Police Week with a lot of awards to our police officers for meritorious service, and it was, it was a great event. We also, I also attended the Light of Literacy Award, which was the largest crowd that I remember at that award, and some excellent receiver, receivers of that award. We had a, on Sunday, we had a packing party for Operation We Care. And this one was a little special for my wife and I, because we actually got to pack a box for our granddaughter who's deployed. And that was a pretty moving time for us. Yesterday, we had Haitian Flag Day with an unbelievable crowd downtown, and went very, very well. Everybody behaved and had a great time, and it was great to see. And then this upcoming week, I have one request. This is Memorial Day, and usually there are accidents on Memorial Day from people overindulging. And I would just say that I hope that everyone is safe. Please be aware. And if you see somebody that shouldn't be driving, please mention it to them and stop them. And I hope everyone has a very happy Memorial Day. Thank you.
Mr. Kitrow.
Today was our first day in our new building. So we have vacated this building for the third floor, and we're now down the street at the old Salisbury Fire Headquarters, now the city of Salisbury Headquarters. So we are there, which includes the mayor's office, the clerk's office, and Arts, Business, and Culture Department. So the visitor, the visitor center has relocated there. And then in the coming months, we will be hosting council meetings there. So we're really excited about the move and our new space.
Ms. Jackson.
I really don't have much to say this evening, but I am glad that the citizens came out and spoke. It does our hard good to hear from you and hear your concerns. Whether you think it does or not, it does. And we appreciate you coming to let us know how you feel, because the only way we know how you feel is if you come and tell us. So we appreciate you, continue to come. If you have any problems, I'm quite sure these concerns will be handled as immediately as they should, and we thank you for doing what we do, and thank you for doing what you do. Thank you.
Ms. Gregory.
You caught me off guard. I thought you were going to leave me for last. Like April said, we're always, I'm always so excited to see people coming out. I think that this is, you know, it's so important for people to engage and let us know where they're seeing problems or even, you know, what we're doing right. So I really appreciate that. I just want to echo my own concerns for that intersection, having gone through it a couple of days ago. You know, I absolutely 100% understand and agree with your concerns. So that, there's that. I apologize for not being in there, because I somehow can't stop injuring myself. I've somehow sprained my foot this time, so this is, this is great. This is fine. This is awesome. But I really appreciate it. I appreciate everybody coming out.
I just have one question. You're not in a closet, are you?
No, actually, I'm in my kitchen, but it's, this is where my laundry hides.
Ms. Blake.
Just as, as always, if you're healthy enough, please donate blood. I'm actually going Saturday for my, my donation, so I just really encourage everyone to do that. One pint can save up to three lives. Thank you again for coming out. I also have concerns with the South Boulevard issue. And being a short driver, I'm only short when I get in my car, and then all of a sudden I can't see anything. So I do think that the city is hearing that, and that's being relooked at. So I think there's going to be some really good viable solutions coming very soon. Thank you again for coming out.
Echoing the sentiments of our past council members, thank you all again. As the district representative for where that light is actually based in, I'm extremely thankful for all of you for coming out to, to voice your concerns. As the city continues to prioritize our Vision Zero strategy, I know we're going to be taking a lot of those comments that were made today and, and making sure that we're implementing a much safer area for our pedestrians and drivers right there. Additionally, on a funner note, for anyone that's looking to do anything this weekend, we're diving into summertime, which means summertime events, which I love to see. Pemberton Park is starting their music and arts show that's going to be this Friday at, I believe, 6. Please come out. It's a, it's a great time. It's a great opportunity for you to connect with your community and listen to some wonderful music.
We'll say, third Friday was a very well-attended event, and I just want to give a shout-out to AMP Studios, who provided music. Multiple students within that program were performing together in various acts, including our Pac-14, Chris DeMoe. His son Elliot was playing on the drums and was phenomenal. And there's several very, I mean incredibly talented musicians in that group, and so it was just, it was good to see. Thursday, I just want to bring is, Taylor's Barbecue is having their grand opening, so we should bring a food element into it. So that's Thursday. And also, today, MarylandFolkFest.com, if you go on there, you can hit the Get Involved button and volunteer for the Maryland Folk Festival. Today, the shifts have opened up, so Mayor, you can get your driver spots. I'll get my backstage spots. Megan, I don't know where you're volunteering this year, but...
I'm probably going to be with the Green Team with my sustainability committee. We'll be making sure that the trash is where it needs to be in the trash bins, and hopefully everybody's recycling that day.
Awesome. All right. I know you volunteer some and...
Yes, the Bike Ballet.
I'm not for sure if I'm driving. If my partner in crime is not going to be there, which is, I'll find something else to do. I'm her GPS.
All right. So I do encourage everyone to get on. We usually have hundreds of people volunteer. It's a huge community lift, and we appreciate everyone's help. With that, I have nothing further. We are adjourned.
Thank you.